Good evening and welcome. I'm Terry Christensen, and this is a special election edition of Valley Politics. We're in the San Jose City Council chambers with a live audience for a city council candidate forum co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters, San Jose and Santa Clara County. Our forum features three sets of runoff candidates for open seats on the San Jose City Council. These are district elections, of course, and you may not live in the district that these candidates represent, but we thought it would be important for people all over the city to meet these candidates. The winners of these three contests could shift the balance on the city council, and in any case, they're going to be voting on things that affect all of us. So we just thought it would be a good idea to give all of San Jose an opportunity to meet these candidates. We're going to spend about 20 minutes with each candidate. They'll each have one minute to answer our principal questions. We'll alternate between the two candidates for their answers. And then just to mix things up a little bit, we're going to have a lightning round of short-answer questions. The candidates also have a wild card that they can use anytime they want for one minute to rebut another candidate, to expand on their comments, or possibly to conclude. Our questions, which some of you submitted online, have been selected by the League of Women Voters, and the League has also provided a timer. Hold up your card. Yeah, she's going to keep us all on schedule, keep the candidates on schedule, and keep all the rest of us on schedule as well. So let's get started. Our first candidates are running in San Jose's Council District 2, the Edenvale area, which is currently represented by Ash Colra. Please welcome Steve Brown, a businessman and nonprofit chair, and Sergio Jimenez, an investigator for the county's public defender. All of our candidates drew numbers to decide who goes first on the first question, and Sergio is the lucky winner in this race. So Sergio, here's the first question. What's your top priority for City Council District 2?
Specifically for District 2?
Yes.
Top priority is public safety. And before I go any further, I just want to thank you all so much for being here. It means a lot to me to be here with you. We're typically in small venues out in the district, but public safety is very important. You know, we currently have only about 820 or so patrol-ready officers, and I'm sure Mr. Brown can attest to the fact that going to thousands of doors and talking to the residents, they are most concerned about public safety. And so that would be my top priority. And I got to tell you that I know public safety extremely well. As Mr. Christensen said at the beginning, I'm an investigator with the Public Defender's Office, and so I go to the very same places the police officers go to and know what they face daily firsthand. I'm in support of Measure F, which I think is going to be very important to retaining and recruiting the sufficient amount of officers to patrol our city, and I think it's a very important issue that we need to address today. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Brown, your top priority for District 2?
I would have to agree. My top priority would have to be public safety. Public safety has been a huge concern with the residents of District 2, and not only District 2, but also throughout San Jose. I've been highly involved in public safety over the last several years. I'm actually a police academy graduate. In turn with that, I was awarded the highest honor that the police department ever honors, which is a Ross Donald Good Citizen Award to a citizen. My position as a security expert also helps me to make good conscious decisions to improve our public safety in San Jose. One of them would be to help with recruitment. I've been meeting regularly with our police chief, Eduardo Garcia. Eduardo and I have been speaking about a lot of different ideas, how to improve in our recruitment, but overall for us here, we need to have some immediate change in order to respond to our 860 officers that overall are just inadequate for our current police presence needs.
Thank you, Steve. This question goes to you first. What's your position on opening up the Coyote Valley to development?
Well, currently, what we have in Coyote Valley is we do have the Brandenburg development as well as the Panatoni that are slated. I haven't seen the specifics because they haven't listed them as to what their plans are for those development areas, but I would be highly scrutinizing those development areas to make sure that they're conducive to our environment there. Overall, as far as the Coyote Valley itself, we've already put a lot of measures in place to protect it and the wildlife corridors that are there. I would uphold those protections that we fought so hard to obtain, and moving forward, make sure anything that we do that would be conducive to the overall environment and the look and feel of our city and what our voters want.
Sergio, Coyote Valley.
Well, I have to tell you that if I had the ability to wave a magic wand and really get what I wanted, I'd like to preserve it. I often think that as we build out, you know, Morgan Hill and San Jose, that it could in fact potentially be our Golden Gate Park. And so I'm very sensitive to the fact that we may eventually build it out to a certain extent in Northern Coyote Valley. So one thing that I've learned on being on the Parks Commission for six years and being the chair for the last two years, I just recently stepped down, is that once we build over land, we lose it forever. And so I want to be very sensitive to preserving those corridors for the animals from the Santa Cruz Mountains to the Diablo Range, and that makes certain that any development that takes place is bringing good quality jobs, not just low-paying jobs, and that we're respectful and sensitive to the natural environment, especially the water table is just a few feet below the surface.
Thank you, Sergio. And this question goes to you first. Morale among city employees is at an all-time low with vacancies in every department, most notably in the police. What can the city do to retain current employees and attract new ones?
That's a very good question. You know, I think this stems back from the passage of Measure B back in 2012. It really, quite frankly, decimated many departments, including more prominently the police department, the fire department. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Police Officers Association, as well as our firefighters, as well as AFSP 101 that represents the majority of the city employees. I think one of the reasons that they've decided to endorse me is the fact that I've opened up the line of communication very early. I think that communication is the bedrock of any good relationship, and as far as I've come to understand is that back when Measure V was passed, Chuck Reed, our mayor at the time, the communication just wasn't there. So I think we need to stop vilifying our public employees. I think we need to treat them with respect and really, you know, have an open line of communication and really truly take an interest in what they do because they are, I think, a very, very important value to us as residents and the city at large.
Steve, rebuilding the city workforce?
Yes, absolutely. And I'd like to touch on the collaboration with the first question with this question here, which is basically our number-one concern, or mine obviously, is public safety. And looking at that, we've had a very tough time with retaining our employees and public safety, especially in the police department. And overall, I think part of that problem is that we need to set aside some programs and policies to retain some of these new recruits on board. One of them that I would like to address is the potential to have a hiring bonus. After two years onboard with a police cadet, once that police cadet finishes their FTO program, moves forward, they could look forward to a bonus of $15,000 to $20,000 to help them with their first place of residence in San Jose. Another point of topic that I've heard a lot from new recruits. On top of that, I think it would be important that we set aside with every development that we build out, 20% to 30% for affordable housing. I would like to see the possibility of taking that 20% to 30% and setting aside about 5% for public safety, new recruits as well, for the course of those two years.
Okay, thank you. Steve, this question goes to you first. What can be done to reduce the high cost of housing in the city to allow younger generations to live here?
Well, I know that with our current plan and our envisioned plan, we're looking at urban village and our concepts, and District 2 has seen that with our Village Oaks build off of Cottle Road. One of the concerns that I do have is that we're pretty slow with our progress, and I think that one of the things we need to do is move forward rather expeditiously. A lot of our progress is set with a .1 to 2 and to 3 with our goal-setting. Sometimes we need to make exceptions, going from a .1 to .3, especially in this time and age right now. We've got a lot of folks out there that are talking to me every day that I'm knocking on doors and telling me our sons and our daughters have to stay at home. They're graduating from college and they just can't afford to live in the area. So I think the progress that we've been making and the plans, we need to be more expeditious with them.
Sergio?
Well, I think housing as it relates to youth is very important, but I always think very globally. You know, we have here in the city of San Jose approximately 4,000 people that are sleeping on the streets. Countywide, we have about 6,000. So as I've stated very publicly, I'm in support of Measure A. I think it's going to be a way to give us the resources to be able to build out a lot of the housing at the different income levels, because I think it's very important that we also, in addition to focusing on housing for youth, for seniors, that we really try to do as much as possible for our most vulnerable populations, and that's the homeless folks. And so I'm very supportive of building more housing, and I think some of the impediments at times is the city bureaucracy and sometimes some of the fees and such that make projects not be able to pencil out as it relates to developers moving forward. So I would like to expedite the permitting process and make sure that we are able to get enough projects in the pipeline, and I really do think the resources from a number of different places can be used for that.
Thank you. We're ready for the lightning round, gentlemen. So Sergio, you go first. This is a yes or no, one or two-word answer. And the first one, do you support ballot Measure F, the San Jose pension modification measure?
Yes.
Steve?
Although I'm not endorsing it formally, I would be voting yes.
Steve, sharks, earthquakes, or Spartans?
Earthquakes all the way.
Sergio?
I think if you look at the pin, Spartans.
You better say that.
I'm at the game on Saturday, so...
Good. That counts big time. Sergio, what did you want to be when you grow up?
Firefighter.
Steve?
FBI.
FBI. Steve, do you support ballot Measure E, the Opportunity to Work Initiative?
I do not.
Sergio?
Yes, and I'll use another word, stability.
And Sergio, what's your favorite park in District 2?
I would have to say Koi Park because we adopted it.
Cahalan. Cahalan.
Steve, dogs or cats?
Dogs.
Correct answer. Sergio?
Dogs.
Sergio, do you support ballot Measure A, the County Housing Bond? I think you just said you did.
I do.
Steve?
I do not.
Steve, Santana Row or San Pedro Square Market?
San Pedro Square Market.
Sergio?
I like Santana Row.
And Sergio, what endorsement are you most proud of?
Neighborhood leaders.
Steve?
Forest Williams.
Forest Williams. Okay, Steve, Nick, we're back to the one-minute answers. What can the city do to relieve transportation congestion in the valley?
Well, I think number one is making sure that our developments with our urban village concepts are conducive to our traffic congestion woes. With Village Oaks and the build-out that we had there, we had some drastic changes. One of them was taking away a left-hand turn for most residents to get onboard Highway 85, and in turn, with the Village Oaks concept, folks that came out of Village Oaks that want to use VTA light rail end up having to walk across the on-ramp, the freeway on-ramp, which creates a complete traffic nightmare. So one of the things we need to do moving forward, any build like that, is build out a catwalk that goes from any development over the freeway into the VTA space. There are some other proposed developments within the area, and I would hope that within the speck of that, we would look forward to alleviating traffic by way of those catwalks and breezeways.
Thank you. Sergio, traffic congestion?
Right, so I think it's maybe unpopular to say, but the city, we're growing in population and it's getting older, and then the reality is that we need to start building more densely and start moving away from the vehicles, from the cars. So I think making sure that we are able to provide sufficient amount of transportation options to folks. Oftentimes, the first and last mile is a big issue, getting folks on transportation. So what that means is how do folks get from their home to the bus stop, and how do they get from the bus stop to their work? And so really trying to figure out solutions on how to address that. I think I'm a big fan of designing complete streets that really allow for different modes of transportation, such as bicycles and walking and such, and that's why I'm in support of Measure B. I think one of the things that Measure B is going to do, which is the transportation taxes, what it's called, it's really going to create some revenue that we're going to be able to use to build out our streets.
Sergio, next question to you. Mobile home parks provide some of the last affordable housing in the city, especially for seniors, but some owners of parks want to eliminate rent control and sell their parks. Should that be allowed?
I am not a fan of allowing that. You know, some of these folks, they've inherited the parks, or there were these big corporations that knew what type of business they were getting into. And so, you know, I've knocked on many doors at mobile home parks, and oftentimes, I get folks at the door, an elderly man who says his wife just died, they were on fixed income, now it's just his social security. He's weeping at the door. And so these are some of our most vulnerable residents, and so I'll state very publicly that I want to do everything possible to keep those parks open. And I know there's been talk about the opt-in policy and essentially passing along some of the capital improvement cost to the residents. I'm not a fan of that, and that's certainly something that was developed by the park owners, so I would do everything in my power to prevent them from closing the parks.
Steve Brown?
I wouldn't be a fan of closing the parks, and I too, in walking the different precincts and speaking to the seniors that do live in those parks, particularly in District 2, I could tell you that it's a concern for me. But I want to do whatever we can within the confines of the law. I'm not an attorney. I don't know the legal precedents, but as a council member, obviously picking up the phone, taking the initiative to actually speak to those property owners and developers and make sure that whatever decision they're making is conducive to us as well as our constituents out there. So no, I wouldn't be in favor of it, but I'm not too sure about what we could do other than incentivize and try to keep it as-is.
Thank you. Steve, this is the last question. What are your ideas for fixing the jobs-housing imbalance for the city of San Jose?
Great question. When you go throughout District 2, you have a lot of commercial real estate that's been open for quite some time. One of the areas that I'd like to improve our job creation is by basically incentivizing businesses to build out those spaces. Those spaces and the TIs, when I get the complaints from a lot of these developers and business owners, they say it's too expensive. Permit fees are 8% in San Jose. If you go throughout the rest of the Bay, cities that are looking to attract business and development, they're offering permit fees closer to 3%, in some cases 1%. One of the things I'd like to add is the local moratorium regarding areas that have not been developed or occupied for quite some time and offering an incentive of lowering that percentage so that those developers will occupy those spaces. Not only doing that in District 2, but also in Eastside, San Jose. I take a drive throughout Eastside, and I see so many different buildings, commercial buildings that are unoccupied. If we could occupy those buildings back with Class A job creation, I think it'd be very important for the residents so they don't have to commute out of San Jose to make a living.
Sergio, jobs-housing imbalance?
So you know, the jobs-housing imbalance, as I've learned through my discussions with folks that have been sitting on the Planning Commission, folks that have been in the city for many, many years following this, we've been chasing that balance for many, many years. I'm not quite sure we're ever going to get there, quite frankly. And so currently, the city has taken a very stringent view as to allowing more housing and trying to incentivize, you know, giving discounted park fees, for example, here to the high-rise developers and such, and so that's an incentive to try to bring more commerce here. And I think there are other incentives we can look at, and certainly bringing more commerce is very important, but yeah, I'm not sure if it's an attainable goal, and we've been chasing it for a very long time. And I personally don't think that it should dictate, and I know I'm steering a little clear of the question, but I'm not sure if it should dictate the ability to build more housing. But it's something we've been chasing. It's a very aspirational goal, and I'm all for bringing more jobs to the city of San Jose, but we need to be very thoughtful as to the unintended impacts of that.
Thank you. Steve Brown's going to play his wild card. Go, Steve.
I think it's important to note that we've got a lot of different changes that are up and coming in the state overall. One of them that I've heard a lot of legislators talk about is a new tax on mileage. So it's very important to note that those that commute the furthest and longest are usually the working class, those that have the lowest amount of income, because housing is so expensive closer into where the jobs are. So that in mind, it's important for us as city politicians to make sure that we're making environments conducive so that our residents could actually work within their community, not having to drive so far out where that added expense just plays a huge burden to their way of life.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. That concludes our time for District 2. Thank you, Sergio Jimenez and Steve Brown. Thank you. Now, let's meet the candidates for District 6. This is the Willow Glen Rose Garden area, and the current representative is Pierre-Louis G. Oliverio. Please welcome Helen Chapman, a community volunteer, and Dev Davis, an education researcher and businesswoman. So here's our first question, and Dev's going to answer first. Why do you want this job? What's your motivation for running for city council?
Hi, I'm Dev Davis. Thank you all for coming tonight. And the reason I want this job is because there are so many issues in San Jose that I care about, and my kids are young. They're 10 and 11 years old, and I want this to be a city where they can live and work when they grow up. So I think it's important to do as much as I can, including getting on the city council and focusing on the five core issues: police, fire, roads, parks, and libraries. And so that's why I want to be on the city council, to make sure that San Jose is a city for families and a city where, when kids grow up, they can live and work here and just be together.
Thank you, Dev. Helen Chapman, why do you want this job?
My family has really been about public service. My husband runs the website for the Neighborhood Association. My younger son is an Eagle Scout and did the project in the Rose Garden with the Rose Markers, and my older son served two tours in Iraq, and he's a veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps. I have been volunteering and doing community service in my neighborhood for over 25 years, and to me, running for city council is an extension of the work that I have been doing with so many neighbors and community leaders and elected officials in various different degrees. So I want to bring that community voice to San Jose City Hall. I want to try and get them the projects that have been languishing a little while and get them done, and then I want to work with the community to advance, you know, things that have interest, you know, and work on public transportation, housing, homeless, affordability. You know, there's a lot of significant issues, and I feel like I've got the experience to do that.
Okay, thank you. So Helen, the next question goes first to you. Do you support the Lincoln Avenue Road Diet?
Yes.
You can expand on that.
I can?
Yes. This isn't the lightning round yet.
Okay, okay. I do have concerns about the process, and I'll explain why. Because we did a different process with the Alameda Beautiful Way, and that was a process that took 20 years really in the making, and it was a significantly different process because we had to relinquish the state highway. It was Highway 82, and so we had to work with Caltrain, and we had to work with property owners, business owners, and three neighborhood associations along the district. And it took us two years of meetings in order to try and reach some sort of consensus on doing some improvements to the Alameda. In fact, we ran it outside of the city process. We got our own, did our own RFP, hired our own person, and brought in a traffic engineering from Berkeley. So we learned some new things. Lincoln Avenue would have been great if the process had involved more voices within, but it is, you know, it is complete, and I'm excited to see it move forward. Thank you.
Dev Davis, Lincoln Avenue Road Diet?
Yes, I do support it. I'm very happy to have it be made permanent for a couple of reasons. First of all, my kids walk to school to Willow Glen Elementary. Well, actually, I only have one now at Willow Glen Elementary, but the kids walk to school every day from North Willow Glen down Lincoln Avenue to Willow Glen Elementary. And so having that area be calmer, that traffic be calmer, is a great reason for having the road diet. It also allows my kids to be able to bike to the Willow Glen Public Library now, and they couldn't do that before without the bike lanes. So those are the personal reasons why I like it as a pedestrian, as a bicyclist on Lincoln Avenue. But I also like it because I did a study, actually, I did two studies, about the benefits of the road diet, and what we really saw is that businesses are doing okay there. They didn't have any decreases, and there were some increases in foot traffic.
Thank you. Well, Dev, this question goes to you first. Did you support the proposed housing project for chronically homeless on Evans Lane in your district, and how will you address the issue of homelessness in our neighborhoods and in our region?
So I supported the permanent housing option on Evans Lane, not the transitional housing option that was passed by the city council. And the reason I supported the permanent housing option is because it would have housed nine times the number of people on that almost six-acre site. I think it's really important for us to use the lands that we have to their fullest capability, and putting only 100 people on that site is just not enough. We have a housing crisis Bay Area-wide and in San Jose in particular. We know this. So I am supporting Measure A, which is the measure for affordable housing. It's a $950 million bond that will hopefully spur some additional affordable housing developments. And I think also, the city of San Jose needs to streamline the planning and permitting processes, which will help bring more jobs to San Jose, and it will also help housing developments go through the process faster so that we can help ease the crisis a little bit.
Helen, Evans Lane and the problem of homelessness more generally?
We do have a...
In one minute.
Yeah, in one minute, I know. Take it, distill it down to a very critical issue, down to one minute. I did support the Evans Lane project, and let me tell you why. Because I believe in transitional housing. I believe in supportive housing, and I believe in the housing-first model because we need to give people a roof over their heads, and we need to give services. And I was happy to see that Abode Services was the contract provider selected by council that evening. I was able to tour the project across the street, 701 Curtina, a few weeks later, and discovered that really that building wasn't designed for homeless. It was designed for student dorms. And so there really are significant issues. I'm proposing Project Hope, which would be an area that could be run out of neighborhood parks and recreation, that could have wraparound services there that would address some of the pre-existing conditions in the neighborhood, like code enforcement, traffic, police, and fire. And so I think, you know, and I also support the housing bond for Measure A, and I think, you know, moving homeless into homes and transitional housing is a good first step, and I'd like to, a plug for the tiny home approval that just got passed.
Thank you. Helen, the next question goes to you first. Morale among city employees is at an all-time low with vacancies in every department, most notably the police. What can the city do to retain current employees and attract new ones?
This may seem like a very trite answer, but really what we have to do, the number-one thing, is return the respect to the job of the public safety officers, our police and fire departments, and we need to pass Measure F, which is the pension reform, because I think once we do that, that sends a signal to our public service officers that, you know, we're ready to end the division between the community and our city employees, and we're ready to move forward. There's a lot of things that we need to work on once we begin that journey down, that bond passes, but I think it really is sending a message that we care about the work the city employees do, and we want to be in partnership with them as neighborhood and community leaders. I've been doing that as part of my work for 25 years, and I want to continue to do that.
Dev Davis, city employees retention and recruitment.
I agree that we need to pass Measure F, and that will help restore some of the morale that has been an issue in not only the police department, but also throughout the city hall. I also think it's important for us to recognize that when we've had these cutbacks, people have gotten moved around into different jobs that they probably didn't get training for because all of the moves are based on seniority instead of what you're actually trained to do and what you actually want to do. So I think it would actually make a lot of sense for us to survey the city staff and find out what jobs they were doing before all of the cutbacks and all of the moves, and to really figure out what are the pain points now? Where are people's jobs not getting done, and what training do they need to be able to get their job done?
We're ready for the lightning round.
Ooh.
So short answer, yes or no, or just a few words. Dev, do you support ballot Measure E, the Opportunity to Work Initiative?
No, I think it will actually kill jobs instead of bring more jobs here.
Helen?
I support it.
Helen, San Jose Giants, sharks, or earthquakes?
Gosh, you know, being an Oakland A's fan, I love the sharks. I love the earthquakes. I am a diehard A's fan. I'm sorry.
Dev?
I got to go with the quakes. And Avaya Stadium's awesome. If you guys haven't been there, it's fantastic.
Dev, what's your favorite park in District 6?
Oh, that's a tough one. I have four parks near my house. I think I'd have to say Bramall Park.
Helen?
Happy Hollow Park and Zoo.
Helen, what endorsement are you most proud of?
Congresswoman Zolaufgren.
Dev Davis?
Mayor Sam Licardo.
Okay, this is a tough one. Dev, Bills or John's?
Bills or John?
There are restaurants in District 6.
Oh. I was thinking names of people.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That is also a tough one because I go to both of those restaurants very often. I think I would have to say I go to Bills more, so I guess I have to say Bills.
Helen? Helen?
Bill's because I used to bring Bill lemons from my yard for his Greek lemon soup. I used to work next door at Bill's Savings.
I think the correct answer is Bill's for breakfast and John's for dinner.
I don't know. John's has a really good smoked salmon scramble in the morning, so I'm gonna take issue with that.
It's tough, it's tough. Where are we? Did you answer last, Helen?
Yes.
Okay, then this is yours. Bart to San Jose, yes or no?
Yes.
Dev?
Yes.
Dev, what former District 6 council member do you most hope to emulate?
I would say, well, does it--
You can include the incumbent.
Okay. I would definitely say Pierluigi. He's been very fiscally responsible.
Helen?
The current supervisor, Ken Jaeger, who has endorsed me.
Helen, bike, skateboard, or walk?
I'm doing an awful lot of walking right now.
Dev?
I've always been a walker, although my kids prefer their bikes.
Okay, so now we're back to the one-minute answers, and we'll start with Dev. Detail one innovative program you'll propose to address quality-of-life issues like graffiti, abandoned cars, trash, crime, that sort of thing.
Well, I think the graffiti issue is already being handled very well by the San Jose Clean App. And for all of you who don't have that downloaded, I encourage you to download it right now. But in terms of crime, I think we need to do many things in terms of public safety. But increasing the numbers of community service officers we have will be a great help to the officers, the police officers that we have right now. And I think we should expand their duties. One of the duties, we actually talked about in a forum last night, that they should be able to do is if a car is blocking your driveway, currently, a CSO cannot have it towed. Very simple thing that CSO duties should be expanded to do.
Thank you. That's what we're looking for. Helen?
I have lots of ideas. In terms of graffiti, I think it's partnering with Exhibition District, that, you know, painting some of the murals that are over on some of the walls. And then what Erin Salazar does is she brings in kids that aren't graffiti artists themselves, but teaches them the art of art. And then there's the art boxes, which our neighborhood was one of the first sponsors for, which is a great way of beautifying areas. And you tend not to graffiti over areas that you did yourself. It's empowering neighborhoods. I too would like to bring in more services, like more dumpster days, to get some of the excess furniture that seems to be cluttering our sidewalks in some places. And I think you do that through neighborhood empowerment and engaging the community.
Okay. Helen, do you support high-speed rail to San Jose? And if so, how can its impact on your district's neighborhoods be mitigated?
That's a tough question. Yes, I do support high-speed rail. But having gone through and sitting on the Dear Don Good Neighbor Committee and having many a conversation with Banterposas and others, knowing the difficulty that high-speed rail can just come in and pretty much tell San Jose what they're going to be doing, is I really want San Jose to stand up to high-speed rail, to make sure that we protect our neighborhoods, we protect our resources if there's eminent domain, that that land is replaced at least at equal value, and that they're not causing us any more fiscal concerns on our infrastructure.
Dev Davis?
No, I do not support high-speed rail, but I do realize that it passed and it's a reality. So, I think it's important, I agree, that we need to stand up as a city council and make sure that our neighborhoods' concerns are met. There are two places in District 6, two different neighborhoods, that will be impacted directly, possibly, by high-speed rail. So, first of all, I think the city needs to get very involved in what the alignment is actually going to be. Because south of Dear Don Station, it's very important for having an aerial alignment that actually goes by the freeway rather than through a bunch of neighborhoods, including my own of North Willow Glen. And then north of Dear Don, there are some people on both sides of the issue about aerial and at-grade. And we need many more community meetings to actually work out what those issues are and what the community actually wants.
Okay, thank you. This is our last question. We'll start with Dev. What are your ideas for fixing the jobs-housing imbalance for the city of San Jose? In a minute.
In a minute? It's just easy. I'll wave my wand. So, there are actually a couple of things. One, I think we need to really work on the planning and permitting process in San Jose. We have a bad reputation for being unfriendly to business, which is why we only have about 84 jobs for every 100 employed residents in San Jose. Streamlining the planning and permitting process will go a long way to making it known that we are actually open for business here. Hopefully, that will also bring down some of the fees. And in addition, I've been proposing a public-private partnership that is similar to the way Team San Jose works, which is a group that tries to bring in tourist events. So, the Olympic Trials, for example, is one of the events that Team San Jose brought in. I want a similar public-private partnership for Jobs San Jose, to bring in employers to really market San Jose as this is a place where families live, this is a place where your business can grow, and this is where we want you to come.
Thank you. Helen Chapman, jobs-housing imbalance, fix it.
Yes, thank you. I wish I could. We've been trying. It's been going on for decades. Where I stand is really from growing from the bottom up, not from the top down, and really encouraging our small businesses to streamline their process, expanding the small business office. We currently have two people managing small business improvements for the city of 1 million people. I think by growing our small business and streamlining the permits there will go a long way. I don't support it as much for larger companies because I think they've had advantages of having reductions in fees for parks and transportation improvements. And then that again, then puts the onus of pressure back on the residents to pick up where that hasn't been covered. So, I really want to concentrate on more small business improvement.
Thank you very much. That's our time for Council District 6. Thank you, Dev Davis and Helen Chapman.
Thank you.
Next up is District 8, the Evergreen area, currently represented by Rose Herrera. Please welcome Sylvia Arenas, a member of the Governing Board of the Evergreen School District, and Jimmy Nguyen, an attorney and business owner. Welcome candidates. Sylvia, you are the lucky winner of the one to start, the right to start us off. So, here's the first question. What are your goals for Council District 8?
Well, there's a couple of goals that I have for our district. First of all, I'm very much invested in our public safety. And part of that is helping a police department pass Measure F. And rebuilding our police department, incentivizing our police officers to return to our police department, making sure that we reinstate our traffic enforcement division. So, those would actually encompass two of my top priorities, which is public safety and traffic safety, as they are some issues that have been major in District 8 as well as across the city.
Thank you. Jimmy Nguyen, your goals for District 8?
Number one, public safety. Number two, strengthen our local economy so we can pay for our city services. And number three, one of the most important ones, is traffic enforcement. As someone who's spent a lot of time at schools, talking to parents, I've seen a lot of people drive dangerously in our neighborhoods, even during school hours.
Succinct answers, thank you. Jimmy, next question is for you. Do you support the Arcadia land development across from East Ridge Shopping Center?
Yes, I do. Earlier this year, I had a chance to talk to the business rep, and he said that they have 250 units planned to build next year, as well as the four or so softball fields. So, generally, yes. Hopefully, we can also add some other niceties for the neighborhood. Last night, the two of us were at the Metal Fair Neighborhood Association, and those people wanted a school as well as a community center. So, hopefully, we can do something like that for them.
Thank you. Sylvia Arenas, the Arcadia land development across from East Ridge?
Absolutely. I want it developed. We want to make sure that we have a community center as part of that development, that we also have a neighborhood school that that community has been asking for over 30 years. And so, I think it's about time that we respond. As an Evergreen School Board member, we're trying to think of some alternative ways to have a neighborhood school, but it would be optimal to have it in that area.
Thank you, Sylvia. Do you support Evergreen Community College leasing land it owns for commercial development?
I haven't taken a formal position on that because I don't, I believe that there were still some negotiations happening. I think that the area can be developed for educational purposes, and some ideas have been having a public swimming pool so that folks that need therapeutic services can have access to that. There was some other ideas that were floating about creating a cooking school or having the nurses, our nurse department onsite have real-life experience and have some public, have some doctor facilities there onsite as well. So, I would encourage those type of development at the 27 acres, but it really depends on what the greater community wants.
Jimmy?
No, I don't. I think that land should be used for educational purposes. As someone who's lived in Evergreen 30 years, I know one of the best things we're known for is education in Evergreen and District 8. So, if we can expand the college, that land, for educational purposes, it'll help us stand out as a community that cares about education and supports it.
Thank you, Jimmy. This one goes to you. Morale among city employees is at an all-time low, as you probably know. There are vacancies in every department, most notably the police. What can the city do to retain current employees and attract new ones?
Number one, we can improve morale. And this is my plug for Measure F, the settlement with the unions in the city that closes out that Measure B of 2012. If we can improve morale, it shows that the city and the employees can work together and have an environment where the city supports its employees. And if anything, if money, we can't do anything about, if we can improve morale, more people will want to work here as well as stay here.
Sylvia Arenas?
I agree with Jimmy. Measure F is definitely the first step in addressing and filling up some of the holes that have been left from the pension reform. But most importantly, it's about creating trust. And so, when we take a look at what our employees are doing, and when I met with some of the unions, what they expressed is they have been overworked and not rightly compensated. And so, I think that's one of the areas that I think we should look into and see if we can have a compensation study and have additional hires in the departments that are appropriate.
Thank you. We're ready for our lightning round now. So, one-word answers are good, two or three words are okay. Sylvia, what current or former council member from your district do you most admire?
Patricia Sasego.
Patricia Sasego. Jimmy?
Probably Dev Cortezzi. He has an easy demeanor. He believes in mediation, and I used to be a mediator, so, Dev.
Okay. Jimmy, Reed Hillview Airport, stay or go?
Is that a one-word answer still?
Yeah.
Stay.
Sylvia, Reed Hillview Airport?
Go.
Sylvia, what's your favorite park in District 8?
I would say Fowler, Fowler Park.
Jimmy?
Lake Cunningham.
Jimmy, tacos or sushi? Sylvia?
Can we have a fusion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can have both.
I have both.
Sylvia, what's your best domestic skill at home?
I can, I'm a really good cook.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jimmy?
I'm good at making messes.
Making messes, okay. Jimmy, do you support the Santa Clara County Measure B? Excuse me, the transit tax?
Yes, I do.
Sylvia?
Absolutely.
Measure B, yes? Sylvia, do you support, excuse me, Sylvia, do you support the $15 minimum wage?
Absolutely.
Jimmy?
This is the statewide minimum wage?
Yes, and proposed locally as well.
Yes. Wait, excuse me, proposed locally?
Yes. Not done yet, not before the council yet, but it is being kicked around. So, it could come to you to vote on. $15 minimum wage.
In what year? Because we're going to 15 minimum wage in 2022 statewide, right?
Sooner.
No.
Jimmy, your favorite city other than San Jose?
Probably where I went to undergrad, UC Irvine, Irvine, the city of Irvine.
Sylvia?
Where I got my master's, San Francisco.
All right. So, now we're back to the one-minute answers. We'll start with Sylvia. Will you support new housing development, including affordable housing, in District 8?
Absolutely. We need to have additional housing stock if we really want to address the needs of our families who are exiting. As an Evergreen School Board member, families have shared with me that they are living in their cars just so that their children can finish the school year. And so, our housing stock needs to include all levels of affordability. And the number-one factor for stability for our children is to have a place to call home.
Jimmy, new housing in the district, including affordable housing?
Yes. Development is good throughout the city and in our district. If we can build a long, major thoroughfare so that we can reduce the traffic impact, that makes sense. Housing is a problem, affordable housing is a problem, not just in District 8, but throughout the city.
Thank you. Jimmy, what would you do to address San Jose's chronic budget shortfalls?
Number one, if we can make San Jose a more favorable place to do business, open your business, develop property. One of the common complaints I have is the permitting process takes too long to get through to start and then open your business. So, if we can streamline that, perhaps we can get more businesses online sooner and then more tax revenue in.
Sylvia, fix San Jose's budget problems in a minute.
I will. Well, first of all, I think the tax modernization is part of creating and generating revenue, especially for our essential city services that have been lacking for quite some years. I think also being creative in terms of the partnerships that we're bringing to the city of San Jose in order to leverage additional city services for our residents.
Thank you. So, this is our last question. We'll start with Sylvia. What can the city do to relieve transportation congestion in the Valley?
Well, I think there is quite a number, Bart, to begin. We all are very familiar with traffic in San Jose, and it's only going to get worse if we don't have easy and multiple transportation modes. If we really want to make a difference with our families, especially those who are working families, the number-one factor that impacts poverty is reliable transportation to and from work. And so, if we don't have that for our families, we can't help support those working families. So, we have to have something, sorry, something reliable for our families in San Jose.
Thank you. Sylvia, Jimmy Nguyen, relieving traffic congestion. What could the city do?
One of the best things we can probably do right now is support the bond measure, Measure A, the, excuse me, B, the VTA tax. It should streamline public transportation, alleviate some of the road maintenance issues we have. But if we can improve our public transportation system, it'll make it more convenient and efficient for people to take it as an alternative to driving and possibly help our economy by strengthening our infrastructure, transportation infrastructure system.
Thank you. That concludes our time for District 8. Thank you, Jimmy Nguyen and Sylvia Arenas. How do these folks look sitting up here? So, on behalf of Valley Politics and the League of Women Voters, thanks and good luck to all our candidates. We really appreciate your participation as candidates. We appreciate the presence of the audience. And I want to do a special shout-out for the League of Women Voters. Will you all raise your hands? They did a lot to-- They did a lot to make this event successful, especially our-- They did a lot to make this event successful, especially our A's timer and our candidates who respected the timer so much, she didn't have to give them even a mean look.
And on behalf of Valley Politics and the League of Women Voters, thanks and good luck to all the candidates. We really appreciate your participation and your eagerness to serve this community. Our forum will be running right up to Election Day on Create TV, or you can catch it as well as previous shows on the Create TV San Jose channel on YouTube. After the election, we'll be back to our usual format with a show on cities in the Valley that are struggling with being too successful. What are the lessons for the rest of us? Meanwhile, remember you can email comments to us at valleypolitics@creativsj.org, tweet us at valley underscore politics, and follow us on Facebook where you can post comments and suggest topics or future guests. And now that's all, folks. Thanks for watching Valley Politics, and thanks again to our cosponsors and all of our candidates.